Well, good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley Evan School District Six. Today is the 22nd of January 2024. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
Director Azari.
Present.
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitsy.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
All board members, present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, again, welcome. We are so glad that you are joining us tonight. And as I look out at this room, there are a lot of you joining us tonight, which means there are a lot of people potentially being recognized tonight by our superintendent. And so we're very glad that you're here. And I'll keep my comments brief tonight so that we can move on with our meeting and get you out of here in a timely fashion. But just so everyone knows, we've been working as a board, and we've been working all afternoon, just working on our own board procedures and protocols and how we work together. We want to be good governors and good servants of this school system. And so sometimes it just takes some, all of us getting together and getting on the same page. And that's what we've been doing this afternoon. And it's been a pleasure, and it always is, to work with my fellow board members. And they are great public servants who do, in fact, give a lot of time to this school district. And so I appreciate them very much. I also wanted to draw everyone's attention to Maplewood. Maplewood Elementary celebrated four parents who completed the Mother Read and Father Read program. And that's a program where six weeks you spend learning to read in both English and Spanish, some learning to read in both English and Spanish, and so that you can read to your children in different languages. And so it's a great program. We have a number. And when I say a number, I mean, a large percentage of our students are English language learners. And what that means is that we want to offer all kinds of supports for those families, for their students, to make sure that they are proficient in English and can do the work in English as well as Spanish. So those are all the announcements that I have tonight. Again, we're glad that you're here. We'll move on with our meeting, and we need to approve our agendas. So if someone would be so kind as to make a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evan School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari.
Aye.
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is our Arc of Weld County Bully Prevention Contest. And so I'd like to invite our presenters to come forward.
Good evening, Dr. Pilch, President Matthews, members of the board. It is my pleasure to be here tonight with our partners from the Arc of Weld County to announce the winners of the 10th Annual Bully Prevention Poster Contest. For the past 10 Octobers, if this feels a little rinse and repeat, it's because we've done this for the last 10 years. So we worked collaboratively with the Arc of Weld County to create this contest to honor the National Bully Prevention Month. This year, we received over 130 poster submissions. To support the process this year, we had a team of our support staff and administration narrow it down to the top 12. And we pre-populated your space with your calendar this year. No wait and no delay this year. And then from there, the final three winners were selected from the Arc of Weld County's staff. And before I turn it over to Alice and Bobby from the Arc to announce the winners, I'd like to recognize a couple of folks. First, Lauren Maxey, our Office's Special Education Administrative Assistant, who helps to organize the online submissions, to, you know, organizes the poster judging, orders the calendars, and so much more behind the scenes. The team of administrative support staff, who helped determine the top 12, all the teachers and students that participated this year, as well as our partners and leaders from the Arc of Weld County that make this contest possible. And with that, I'd like to welcome Bobby and Alice from the Arc of Weld County to say a few words and announce the winners.
Good day. My name is Bobby Torres, and I am a curator of the Arc of Weld County. We're the best. Proud of. Proud of the.
10th year.
10th year. Offering. Prevention. Perfect poster counting the contest. Poster protest October. National. Boot bullying, bullying. I will. Alex.
Good evening. My name is Alice Torres, and I'm an advocate from the Arc of Weld County. And we are an advocacy organization focused on protecting the rights of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities through empowerment, advocacy, and community outreach. And now I would like to present the 2023 Bully and Prevention Poster Contest winners. Our third place winner, receiving a $50 gift card, is Shiloh Welch from Ann Hyman Elementary School. And in second place, winning a $75 gift card, is Nolan Davis from Ann Hyman Elementary School. And in third place, winning a $100 gift card, is Camila Isabel Figueroa from School District Six Online Academy.
And thank you to the Arc of Weld County for this contest. It is one of the highlights of the year, when you guys come and present these calendars to us. And congratulations to Kamala Nolan and Shiloh as well. And next on our agenda is our Greeley Central High School Best Buddies, as well as the Arc of Weld County Film Festival. And so I want to invite those presenters forward as well.
Hello, my name is Mary Goffney. I'm an intensive functional learning special education teacher at Greeley Central High School. I've also been the Best Buddies Teacher Advocate for the past five years. And Best Buddies is a program that builds friendship between people that have disabilities, intellectual and developmental, and typical peers, offerings, sorry, offering social mentoring while improving the quality of life and level of inclusion in our schools. Our program meets every Friday in our IFL classroom to engage in various activities, such as games, craft projects, field trips, fundraisers, plus planning and the hosting of the Arc of Weld County Film Festival. And next, we'll have our officers speak, starting with Emmy Saskey.
Hello. My name is Emmy Saskey, and I'm a junior at Greeley Central High School. I'm the PR for Best Buddies, meaning that I manage our Instagram and other forms of communication. I've been a part of Best Buddies since my freshman year, and I've been involved with the Film Festival last year. It was very fascinating getting to experience all the creativity that exists within our community. The turnout was absolutely amazing, and many Greeley Central students stopped by to watch as well. But we are even more excited to see how the Film Festival has grown since last year. The Film Festival is a series of short films starring or produced by individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities in collaboration with the Arc of Weld County. While they will all range in presentation and story, they will all have the same theme of inclusivity, meaning to highlight how we are all more alike than we are different. This year, we will have three showings on Thursday, March 28th, at 10:15 a.m., 1 p.m., and 6 p.m., all at Greeley Central. And now I would like to present Hazel, our Vice President.
Good evening. My name is Hazel Ibarra, and I am a senior at Greeley Central, and I am the Vice President of our Best Buddies Chapter. The Arc Film Festival has a theme each year. This year's theme is "Let's Art Together", focusing on the art that people can create together. The video submission needs to display disability inclusion, and it needs to be about one to three minutes long, and to be eligible for the $500 prize sponsored by Walt Francis. The video submissions need to be submitted by March 1st, 2024, and we encourage our community members and students to submit videos. I remember last year's Arc Film Festival, for the first showing, I was able to watch the videos. And during the festival, I was standing there with fellow teachers and audience members watching the videos. And I remember looking next to me and seeing the laughter that filled within the room, as well as tears that overcame all of us. We encourage everyone to make videos that are impactful, lighthearted, and funny, and especially to have fun with them. I hope to see you all there and get the opportunity and enjoy the wonderful videos that are submitted. Thank you. And now for our President, Luya.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Luya Tukla. I'm a senior at Greeley Central High School, and I'm Chapter President of our Best Buddies Program. The Arc Film Festival is a great way for the community to come together, to celebrate our differences, and recognize how through them, we can be united. It's a way to bring awareness to the disabled community and bring awareness to the role that we, as individuals, have in creating an inclusive and positive environment. And that is exactly why we are here today, to personally invite you, as well as the community, to join us in creating that environment. As mentioned before, the Arc Film Festival presents videos where the main focus is towards the disabled community. Last year, I made a video about the environment and friendship created within our Best Buddies Club. During the creation of the video, I had interviewed a member, and I got to hear what friendship meant to her. For her, friendship was about learning from someone different from you while still having fun and laughing. And that's what she felt like she got from Best Buddies. It was so sweet, and it honestly made my whole day. And it reminded me why I joined Best Buddies three years ago. You too can make a quick, short, and fun video, but if that isn't what seems aligned for you now, you can still come to hear stories and friendships and learn more about the disabled community. We want this to be a community event. Last year, we had a great amount of people come to support the event, and this year, we'd like to beat that and have even more in attendance. I like myself a little challenged, so. So join us on March 28th at one, two, or all three of the showings. You won't regret it. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for being here tonight. We certainly appreciate the presentation and like, it's, we always appreciate when you're here. It does seem weird that Tommy Medina is not here, to be such the face of Best Buddies for so long. And certainly miss that guy. But thank you, guys, for being here. We appreciate your presence. And I will say again, for those that missed it, it's March 28th. Is that right? March 28th for the Film Festival. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Council of Student Representatives Report. And so I'll invite our Council of Student Representatives forward. And we have Greeley West presenting tonight, along with Mr. Assamis. Seeing coming to the podium.
Good evening, President Matthews, members of the board, and Dr. Pilch. We have a very unique group of Council of Students, and I'll say, welcome to our Council of Student Reps, people that are here. We are lucky to have such an amazing group across our district, the Council of Student Reps, students from each of our high schools, including our charters that come together to make decisions, to give us feedback, and then also to have activities for our students. And these students do a great job of leading. Our students this round are from Greeley West. And I'll first start with Mr. Cranston to say a few words, and then he'll turn it over to the students.
Hi, Jeff Cranston, Principal at Greeley West. I'll just say thanks for the opportunity to hear the voice of our students at Greeley West. And I'm excited to introduce to you these kids. And I'll let them introduce themselves and tell you about the great things they're doing at our school. So, Akim, you're up first. Okay.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Pilch. I'm Akim Jahal, a senior at Greeley West. Today, I'd like to take a moment to highlight just a few of the amazing clubs and groups at Greeley West. One group I would like to recognize is the Spartan Robotics Team. This past weekend, the robotics team hosted Greeley's first-ever VEX Robotics Competition and placed in the top six teams out of the 36 participating from across the state. Coming up in the spring, the robotics team will have the opportunity to travel to Canada to compete at an international robotics competition. Another group I would like to highlight is the Greeley West Fashion Club. Fashion Club not only allows students to explore the visual aspects of the fashion industry, but also the marketing and business aspects. Most recently, the club's Fashion Around the World presentation was a highlight from our school's Diversity Day. The presentation displayed handmade outfits created by students to represent the cultural diversity at West. The club has several upcoming trips planned, including one to a cultural fashion runway in Denver. Last, I would like to highlight the Greeley West National Honor Society. As a member and officer of NHS, I can personally speak on how many members of NHS are consistently finding ways to volunteer and get involved, not only at our school, but also in our community. Most recently, NHS ran its annual winter coat drive. All of the items collected were donated to the Scroll &amp; Fan Clothing Bank and the Rodarte Community Center. These are just a few of the diverse clubs Greeley West has to offer. What these groups all have in common are the club sponsors that go above and beyond to give students the opportunity to explore their interests and get involved in the community. Whether it's by giving their time before or after school to supervise meetings, helping students plan enrichment activities such as field trips and volunteer opportunities, or even bringing surprise treats like donuts to meetings just because they wanted to. The teachers that act as club sponsors at our school are an intrinsic part of Greeley West and our education. While some sponsors do receive stipends or some grant funding to cover club-related costs, it is reasonable to say that our sponsors greatly exceed any expectations placed on them. Our club sponsors should be appreciated and celebrated for all the time and energy they put into creating educational opportunities for students beyond the classroom. Going forward, I believe District Six should look for more ways to recognize these educators and their efforts to get students involved. Thank you. And now I would like to introduce Gavin Peterson.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Pilch. My name is Gavin Peterson, and I'm a junior at Greeley West High School. Tonight, I am honored to be here representing the Council of Student Representatives. I have been in District Six since kindergarten, and prior to my time at West, I attended S. Krista McAuliffe's Semi Academy and Brentwood Middle School, where I participated in just about everything, cross-country, soccer, basketball, Battle of the Books, bands, robotics, NJHS, and student council. Having all of these opportunities helped me to learn more about myself and inspired me to not be afraid of new challenges. I carried my curiosity and confidence into Greeley West with an open mind, knowing that the more I experienced, the more likely I would be to find my passions. I jumped into tennis, something new and unfamiliar, because of Mr. Pace, who was so welcoming. I was also immediately amazed by the many elective course offerings at West. I started in business and construction courses, where I learned so much. However, I had an opportunity to attend ThesCon December of my freshman year. It's an annual conference in Colorado for students in theater, and I loved it. Frem encouraged me to join theater, and I am so grateful to be a part of the legacy of Greeley West Theater, where I not only have learned to act, but I know how much I love being able to speak in public as a result. Make sure you check out our upcoming show, Mean Girls. We will be performing the first and second weekends in March, and tickets will go on sale soon. Through theater, I went to New York City over the summer, where I had the chance to meet the Today Show producer, who met with me personally via Zoom to help me plan out a career plan in the similar field. This wouldn't have been possible had it not been for the programs and staff at Greeley West. Being a servant leader who makes a difference has always been a part of who I am. Greeley West Student Council has been a place where I can learn more about leadership and refine those skills. This class is invaluable to my development as a human. I am also so grateful for the Success Foundation's Junior Board, where I get to serve as the president and support other aspiring leaders, as well, not to mention this Council of Student Representatives. Today, I started my first class at Ames in Mass Media and Communications. I am so excited about our upcoming guest speaker, Alex Lenhart from CBS News. She also is a Greeley alum. Concurrent enrollment courses are such a gift to the students in our community, and we are all so grateful. I am taking a UNC Calculus class at West as well. These collegiate transcripted courses are not only preparing me for my future, but I am already literally in college, receiving credit and finding out more about myself. I want to thank you, our board, our superintendent, our educators, and our community, who has made all of this possible. Your belief in our students and generosity is unparalleled. I'm just one of thousands of students in our district who have access to the opportunities you create and support, and I couldn't be more proud to be District Six. Thank you. And now I'd like to introduce Areli.
Good afternoon. My name is Areli Mendiola Morales, and I am a junior at Greeley West. This year, West has seen an advancement in the IB program and IB classes available. There are many wonderful opportunities with this program, such as IB Scholars. West has a very diverse population of students, so it is exciting to see that they can be exposed and immersed in these classes. I am taking IB Spanish II this year. Compared to the other Spanish classes I have taken, this class has shown me how to critically think through rigorous readings and speaking exercises, and has allowed me to practice my Spanish at a higher level. Something that could further advance the presence of IB in District Six and Greeley West is training staff at the district level about the program. This would promote it district-wide and hopefully grow IB to be an even bigger part of our school. On an exciting note, in December, Mr. Caleb Flores, an English teacher at West, was awarded the Milken Educator Award for being the first District Six teacher to do so since 2005. Summa described it as "the Oscar of Teaching", and it was very exciting to see him surprised with the award. I'm sure we all have heard nothing but good things about Mr. Flores and how he creates a positive environment in his classroom. He is an inspiration and role model to so many people. It is spectacular to see how many amazing teachers we have there. Throughout my experience at West, I have drastically changed as a person. I was a nervous, shy kid, but the teachers and classmates brought out the best in me. The school has been a huge part of my life ever since. I have joined clubs such as the National Honor Society, Mexican-American Studies Society, Martial Arts Club, and Dream Team. I've been more willing to try and do new things in and out of school, and this is due to the amazing staff. Avid has played a huge part in my life ever since I joined in sixth grade, has provided me with a family-like community. Last year, my Avid teacher moved from West, and I was left surprised and happy that everyone in my current Avid class was so welcoming and kind. Mr. Redmond was also part of this. He knows how to bring everyone together and create such a fun and bright environment. Thank you to everybody in District Six who has played a part in creating and shaping Greeley West into what it is today. Because of all the available resources and opportunities, students have continued to learn and grow with your support and guidance. Thank you.
Guys, I don't know if we'll have any questions or comments from board members. Well, we have one already. Dr. Campos Spitsy.
Thank you, guys, for the Greeley West update. Great to hear all the amazing things that you guys are doing. But thank you for acknowledging your teacher sponsors, the club teacher sponsors, and for challenging us to recognize them more. I really love that, that you guys, as students, can see that they are putting in, you know, a lot of extra time and really believing in you guys and investing in you. But to have the students recognize that, I think, is the biggest compliment to those teachers. I am looking forward to Thursday of this week. We get to celebrate a lot of our educators at the Success in Sixth Foundation Award Ceremony. So hopefully, we will be acknowledging some of those amazing teachers that are in your building. And then lastly, I was going to ask Areli, who is taking Spanish II International Baccalaureate, a book that you might recommend for me to challenge my Spanish.
Well, we read La Casa de Bernarda Alba, and I think that it is a, it's like a theatrical piece, so it's kind of harder to understand. I think I understood it more when I watched it, but I think it would be very, very challenging to read that.
Cool. I'll add it to my book list. Thank you.
Guys, I had a question, and I don't know, one of you can answer or all of you can answer. And you've certainly given us a lot of, a lot of what West does, right? When you talk about Avid and IB and theater program that's there. But in your own words, what makes West special? You had a lot of choices to go to, for high school, and you guys chose West. And what makes West a special high school? For anybody that's out there, or maybe an eighth grader that's trying to decide, like, should they go to North Ridge, or Central, or West?
I think that West has a really strong sense of community. We're all there for the games. We are there for the assemblies and everything, and I think that that's really part of it. And since it's such a big school, I think that it's harder to have such a sense of community and family. But I think that Greeley West really has that. And again, with the extracurriculars and the classes that I was to take, there's like a lot of opportunities there. Thank you.
Yeah, so I was deciding between North Ridge and West, and I chose West. And I'm like really grateful that I did. I think it's been a very welcoming environment, and it's like a family. And I found like my friends and the teachers that support me and everything.
I would say the big thing that makes West special to me is the diversity, and just like that it's a huge school, and there's so many different people from all walks of life to me. Especially coming from a smaller charter school during middle school, I can't imagine where I would be at when it comes to understanding like different cultures or like points of view, and I just think West has played a huge role in that growth, so.
Well, thank you all, and I don't see any more questions or comments from board members, but I'll say thank you for being here. We appreciate, one, we appreciate West as a community. We also think it's a special community, but also appreciate what you guys do with our Council of Student Representatives and the representation you provide there. And also want to introduce our two Council of Student Representatives. For those of you that don't know, we have some of our Council of Student Representatives sit with us every board meeting. They provide a lot of insight and comments, and that's tonight, we have Natalie Luiza Valenzuela and Reagan Medellis sitting with us as they have for the last few weeks, our few board members, so we appreciate you guys as well and being a part of, being a part of our board meeting, so. Again, thank you. We thank you for being here tonight. Next on our agenda is our proclamation for Black History Month. And this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the proclamation recognizing February 2024 as Black History Month as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Before we go any further, Mr. Norwood, would you be so kind as to read that proclamation for us?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Honorary proclamation of the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six. Proclamation recognizing February 2024 as Black History Month, whereas Black History Month recognizes and celebrates the significant contributions of Americans tracing their ancestry to Africa, and whereas the observance of Black History Month has been proclaimed by every U.S. President since 1976, and whereas 46.9 million Americans and more than 560 students in Greeley Evans School District Six are of African descent, making up more than 2.4% of the student body, and whereas Black History Month is celebrated every February as an homage to achievements of Black Americans who have shaped American history, from the Buffalo Soldiers to the first Black President and Vice President of the United States of America, and whereas the evolving history of Black residents of the United States is history of our country. Whereas District Six is an institution of public education, and it is imperative that our schools teach the history of Black Americans and their experience living in the United States, and, oops, lost my, whereas in District Six Strategic Plan, there is a strong commitment to cultural excellence and implicitly recognizing the accomplishments and contributions of Black Americans in the past, present, and in the future, and whereas the contributions of Americans who are of African descent in the fields of science, politics, medicine, education, art, music, writing, public service, and many other careers have greatly enhanced and advanced these fields, improving the lives of Americans, and whereas the art, food, dance, music, and culture of Black Americans is embedded in the colorful weave and the fabric of American culture. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six recognizes and celebrates February 1 through February 29, 2024, as Black History Month, and encourages all employees, students, families, community members to honor our citizens of African descent and recognize their immense contribution to our communities, our state, our nation, and our world. Given under my hand and the executive seal of Weld County School District Six this 22nd day of January 2024, Mr. Michael Matthews, President.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood. Appreciate you for doing that. Do want to invite to the podium Zanea Shanks, Brooklyn Tinnan, and Amari Edwards, and guys, I don't know if you have prepared remarks or before we open this up for board member comments, but if you do, we would love to hear those now.
Of course. My name is Zanea Shanks, and I am a senior at Greeley West High School, and I am also Student Council President. Today with me, I have Brooklyn Tinnan, the head chair of the Black History Month Committee, and Amari Edwards, a member of the Black History Month Committee. And on behalf of students at Greeley West High School and across the district, we are proud to accept the Black History Month proclamation. I would like to turn it over to Brooklyn and Amari to share what Greeley West has planned this month for Black History Month.
Good evening. My name is Brooklyn Tinnan. I'm a senior and also the head chair of the Black History Month Committee at Greeley West High School. Our mission this year is to shed light on the significance of Black History Month. Additionally, we will be recognizing Black students and staff of District Six while also paying homage to our ancestors and recognizing their courage and bravery. I also wanted to thank the members of the Black History Month Committee and those who made this possible. I want to now introduce Amari Edwards to speak on the activities we have planned for Black History Month at Greeley West High School.
Hello. My name is Amari Edwards, and I'm a senior Student Council Representative at Greeley West High School. So for the first thing we have planned, we have a student spotlight, and for this, we're gonna have teachers nominate outstanding Black students and then put them up on the boards inside of school, and then I think that's just a good way to pay homage to some of the achievements that Black students have at Greeley West. And then we're also gonna do morning announcements, and to keep them a little interesting, we're gonna do a Black History trivia and then also accompany it with fun facts, and then we're gonna play little snippets of Black artists like Rihanna and Bob Marley, and then we're also doing an assembly, which is still in the making. However, we're gonna have a guest speaker come on to speak about some of the struggles about being Black in America, share some motivation and some insight, and then also just add some relevance to the month. Overall, I'm very excited to celebrate this cherished month with Greeley West and District Six. I think you guys do a really good job at integrating cultures in Greeley and through school and clubs and sports, and so thank you for that.
Thank you all, and thank you for being here tonight, and I don't know if our board members will have any questions for you specifically, or they may just have comments of their own, and also I want to open this up for Dr. Pilch, if she has anything she would like to say on Black History Month.
Thank you, President Matthews, and I really appreciate you all being here from Greeley West High School tonight to share with us a little bit about what's going on at Greeley West, and I know that our schools throughout the district have lots of activities going on, and we had to pick one to come tonight, but we're so proud of our students and our staff who have taken leadership during this important time, and I would encourage you to watch our district Facebook page and your schools' Facebook pages, because many of the events, I'm sure, will be highlighted there. So thank you again, students. Thank you, staff at Greeley West, for all you do, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Dr. Campos Spitsy.
So we just had MLK Day, right, Monday off, and it's a time to reflect on our current times, but also the history of African Americans in this country. And in my house, we read a lot, and we read about Linda Brown versus Board of Education. Now sitting on a Board of Education, to me, that hits me differently this year, that there was a Board of Education versus a nine-year-old Black girl who wanted to go to a school that was segregated and was all white and had to be accompanied, as you guys know the story. So I think this is a time to reflect on the reality that African Americans faced in this country not too long ago, and to celebrate how far we've come and how much work is left to do. I wanted to invite the community on February 11th, which I believe is a Sunday, at the Link Library, which is not too far from here, the new downtown library, from 2:00 to 3:00 there will be a Chautauqua-like presentation by an actor who will be impersonating Martin Luther King Jr. It'll be 40 minutes of a presentation followed by question and answer for the community. If you've never seen a Chautauqua presentation, they're amazing. These actors have studied their character and the history and the biographies of their character for years sometimes, and you get to ask them questions as if they were that person in front of you. So please, if you're free on Sunday, February 11th, from 2:00 to 3:00 at the Link Library, you will have that opportunity. It'll be free.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsy. Any other questions or comments from board members? I don't see any, and I would just say again, thank you to you guys for being here tonight. We are very honored to get to proclaim this as Black, or February, not this, but February is Black History Month. It is, I think, for most of us, right? Whether your ancestors came here from Europe or from Asia, from South America or Central America, most of those ancestors came to this country by choice, and oftentimes, those, if your ancestors came from Africa, they did not come by choice, and it's a unique, unique part of American history that our Black students and our, yeah, that you guys, it's a history that you have that is quite unique, and so we appreciate you being here tonight to take, to accept this proclamation, so thank you. We'll now have a vote. Ms. Lemon.
Director Azari.
Aye.
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. I'll sign this proclamation now that we voted on it and bring it to you guys. This is also an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six proclaims February 5 through 9, 2024 as National School Counseling Week as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Before we go any further, Mr. Bentley, would you read this proclamation for us?
It would be my pleasure. Thank you, President Matthews. Honorary proclamation of the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six. Proclamation recognizing February 5 through the 9, 2024 as National School Counseling Week, whereas school counselors are employed in schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs to help students become productive members of society, and whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enable all students to achieve success in school. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six recognizes and celebrates February 5 through February 9, 2024 as National School Counseling Week, given under my hand and the executive seal, executive seal of Weld County School District Six on this 22nd day of January 2024. Michael Matthews, President.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Like to invite Ms. Deb Heck to come forward to receive this proclamation. Again, a sec, I don't know if you have prepared remarks, but if you do, all right.
In really large fonts, and I didn't bring my glasses, so we'll try. Thank you so much for having me. I'm the lead school counselor for District Six. I'd like to start by thanking Dr. Pilch and the members of the school boards, along with our district leadership, for their constant support of our professional school counselors. We currently have, wait for it, 54 school counselors across our elementary, middle, K-8, and high schools. While the roles and responsibilities look a lot different at each grade level, there's definitely a commonality of who the school counselor is. The school counselor strives to ensure equitable academic, career, social-emotional development opportunities for all our students. They work with students to discover their interests, help them dream big, and then be there to celebrate with them with their successes. They're also the people who are there in moments of sad times. With empathy, they hold that space with students. They are the person who is there when students make mistakes, sometimes big, sometimes small, and help them restore relationships and learn new skills. And they aren't just supporting students, they're supporting our staff in working with students, as well as staff in their own SEL. For this, and I could go on and on in many more reasons, I'm honored to accept this proclamation and share with our 54 school counselors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heck. Oh, don't go anywhere just yet. We probably have some comments from board members, but want to give our superintendent first chance to speak to this proclamation.
Thank you, President Matthews, and I think the proclamation and your comments, Deb, are just spot-on for how critical the role is of a school counselor here in our school district and throughout the country, really. I remember back to being a middle school principal and a high school principal, and those school counselors were always a core member of my leadership team in the building and just could not have done the work as a building leader without the school counselors that I know I've had the privilege of working with. And I do want to say that we got to these 54 counselors with Mellevia Rye Dollars and Esser Dollars, the COVID relief dollars, and so we're gonna work hard to try to maintain counselors in our schools. We think they're such critical roles for the success of our students, and Ms. Heck said that they also support our staff, but I know oftentimes that counselors are also helping staff who are dealing with difficult issues, and they are frontline when there is a death of a staff member or a student or a family member of one of our students. They're frontline, providing support for our staff and students in those buildings, and truly, we just could not do our job without you, so thank you. Thank you, you and your colleagues.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Mr. Azari.
Yeah, I just want to go with Dr. Pilch said, and Deb was one of my counselors at one of the schools that I taught at, and I just gotta second that again, Dr. Pilch, that I simply would not have been able to be effective in what I did without the assistance of the school counselors. You were a lifeline for me, so thank you, and a shout-out to all our school counselors throughout the district. Thank you so much.
Can I make a comment back to that as well?
Sure.
In making a student's schedule, there's nothing that would make me happier than to put them in Mr. Azari's orchestra class, because I just knew it was gonna be such a great experience, so it was mutual.
Ms. Mash.
Yeah, I just wanted to offer personal experience as a parent. I now have a senior, so my appreciation for school counselors has changed and grown exponentially this year as we're navigating scholarships and applications, and we hear so often from our students, our Council of Student Representatives, just how important relationship is to our students. My daughter was able to get a letter of recommendation from one of her counselors who just, I was like, she should write your biography. She gets you. This is amazing, so, yes, just thank you so much. We know mental health is such an important piece, navigating all of the paperwork that is just so cumbersome sometimes, and so your help and your development of students in so many ways is just, it can't be, it can't be explained, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Mr. Norwood.
Hi, Ms. Heck.
Hi, Mr. Norwood.
I just want to say thank you for being a very integral part of my son's life when you were his counselor, so I remember and I greatly appreciate it. You made a big difference in his life, so thank you.
He's all an adult now, too.
He is. He's actually got a 11-month-old son that, when we were in our meeting today, actually crashed our party, so my grandson gotcha, but thank you. I mean, really, you were a big part. I mean, he was struggling at times, and you made a big difference, so thank you.
I'll take all these comments back to all the counselors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Heck, and don't go anywhere just yet. We still, we still have a proclamation to give you. Sorry. But I'll add my sincere thanks as well, just as a parent of students in the district. I think our counselors, one, definitely prepare and helping that transition to college and getting our, getting kids to college and whatever is next in their lives, but also I think, I feel like our counselors, they're the people that know when they've broken up with a girlfriend or boyfriend, I mean, they're just so involved, who their friends are and what's happening in friendships, and so so involved in our kids' lives, and we greatly appreciate the work that you do in this district. And so I do think now, Ms. Lemon, we're ready for a vote, but don't go anywhere just yet, a sec.
And Director Azari.
Aye.
And Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda tonight is our superintendent's honor roll. So, Dr. Pilch, I will hand this over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. And, you know, it's already been a great meeting, and it's just about to get better. So, we are going to honor on our superintendent's honor roll our best and brightest from our fall and early winter sports and activities here in District 6 from Greeley West High School, Northridge High School, and Central High School. So, with that, I'm going to bring Mr. Osmus up to the podium, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Leadership, who's inviting the athletic directors, I think, from each of our high schools as well. But we are, you know, I'll just remind everyone, we implemented the superintendent's honor roll last spring, and it's really an honor for me to get to say, okay, here's who we're going to honor this meeting. And so, all of these folks that are being placed on the superintendent's honor roll and being recognized tonight for their fine work here in District 6.
So, good evening again, President Matthews, members of board, and Dr. Pilch, and our Council of Student Reps members. It is my honor as Assistant Superintendent to be here and honor some students who participate in, whether it's sports, or band, or choir, or different activities. That are the best. And when you get all-state recognition of something, you know that you're pretty darn good, and your hard work has paid off. But I also want to say thank you to a few other people that are always not here, but it's the coaches that put in all the extra hard work behind the scenes, and also the athletic directors who oversee their work, and also to Chris Klein, who's not here tonight, but our district athletic director, just to make sure that we have opportunities for our students to excel in these activities. And with that, we first have Northridge. We will honor our Northridge students, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Jeff Collins, Athletic Director.
Good evening. Thanks for having us again. This year, we had eight, or in the fall, I guess, we had eight students earn all-state honors. So, I'll read their names now. None of them wanted to give speeches, so it's just me tonight. So, we have Braden Asmus and RJ Gallegos with football. Owen Henderson, Dylan Phipps with soccer. Bo Tellez softball. Ava Lopez cheerleading. Julian Jensen is now the second, two-time, sorry, two-time all-state unified bowler. And then we had Ethan Wallmeyer as well with bowling. So, thank you. And I wanted to second what Anthony said about our coaches. They're fantastic. They put in lots of time. Coach Hayden and I were in the gym at 6:00 AM this morning, so it's a lot of time. So, just please thank them when you get a chance.
Congratulations to the Grizzlies. And we'll turn this over now to Victoria Leonard, who's here to celebrate a little bit with the Wildcat All-State Honories.
Thank you. I have with me DECA state participants and qualifiers. Yereni Miramontes is DECA president and a two-time state qualifier. She will be representing Greeley Central next month in the Startup Business Plan Event. Adriana Parra Herrera is a two-time state qualifier and will be representing Greeley Central in the entrepreneurship series, and those are the two that I have with me today. We also had Talky So and Ramon Sanchez, our first-time state qualifiers, and will be competing as a team in the entrepreneurship event. So, that was DECA. And then, we also had all-state choir. These students auditioned for this honor, which included side reading, and were selected based on their audition solo performance and their skills. There were 2,100 state auditions across Colorado, and only 400 students were selected statewide for this honor. These students are Erin Chastain, Maya Cooney, Malaya Hurtado Hamby, Madeline Gwynn, Ryan Caldwell, Cecily Mash, and Natalie Highfield. They were not able to be here today because they are rehearsing for the Guys and Dolls musical that we have March 6th through the 9th, and they are at Greeley Central all learning their parts. We also have all-state jazz choir, and after auditions, only 48 students were selected across the state for this honor, and only four for this particular voice part. Cecily is an alto II, and one of six all-state selections for jazz choir for her part, and that was Cecily Mash.
Hi, I have two students with me tonight we want to recognize. First is Elise Hydock, second-team all-state in softball, and Calvin Long, who is qualified for the all-state orchestra with the double bass. Students that couldn't be here tonight, I want to recognize Sarah Insinia, all-state honorable mention in softball. David Lopez, all-state honorable mention in football. I have Aiden McPherson, Giselle Rivera, and Raymundo Ocampo Flores, who all qualified for state DECA here at the Broadmoor next month. I have Joshua Rascone, who also qualified for all-state orchestra in the principal flute. Acadia Neal, who was a finalist at the Colorado State Thespian Festival in December. Alea Leo Martinez, flute in the all-state band, and Adrian Bolton and Aspen Hakata, all-state choir. In addition, Joshua Rascone was awarded the From the Top Scholarship, which awards recipients a $10,000 prize, and he will perform later this spring. So, congratulations to the Greeley West all-state recipients.
You ready for me to continue?
Well, I wasn't sure if you were done with the honor roll. So, are we done with the honor roll?
I think we're done with the honor roll. And we'll just say again, congratulations, and, I mean, these are some of the top honors you can be awarded in the state of Colorado. So, just so proud of our students, and thank you again to all of our coaches and sponsors who helped to support these students. So, thank you. I have a few announcements for my report. I'll be brief. Again, I want to say congratulations to the Arc of Weld County Art Poster Contest winners. It was really fun to see some of our younger students being recognized here tonight. This past Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend the Pathways to Success Conference for the AVID program at our high schools at UNC, and just a huge thank you to UNC for hosting us and being there to inspire and lead and encourage over 159, or 10th and 11th graders from West, Central, and Northridge. And again, a huge shout-out to those students and their parents who were able to show on Saturday morning. It was an early morning Saturday, and they were there to learn and to get ready for college. So, it was really a lot of fun. I also want to just thank the families and the staff for enduring the hardship last week of the cold weather. It was not ideal to have such cold weather coming off of that Martin Luther King holiday, and it's always a difficult decision around counseling school or delaying school. Our transportation folks, all that team, they worked so hard to make sure the buses were ready and would be safe and warm for our students to be able to come to school. We had teams out in the middle of the night with pipes breaking and power outages here in the district, and a thank you to the Greeley Fire Department for bringing out their trucks or their pumps for us to help pump water out of the basement at Heath Middle School down in the mechanical room. We had almost two feet of water down there, and our pumps just weren't getting the job done, and so, the fire department helped us out. So, that, you know, it was really a team effort last week with our facility staff and our other building staff, and I just want to say thank you to them. And thank you to our families and our students and our building staffs for being so flexible last week. We also lost power at several of our sites, and, you know, it's, things change right away when that happens, and it changes lunch, it changes changing classes, and it requires a lot of people to come on board. I was so proud of our nutrition services staff at those sites. They all were impacted over lunchtime, and they all promised us, they said, we'll get the kids fed. It might be sun butter sandwiches, but we will make sure the kids get fed. So, thank you to all of you for your flexibility, and I think we're out of the really frigid cold weather for a little bit, and there won't be any more hand-wringing, at least this week, about school closures or late starts. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. And yeah, hopefully, we're, at least for this week, out of the frigid weather. Next on our agenda is our work session report. So, Ms. Lemon, would you be so kind as to give us that report?
The Board of Education spent the afternoon in a work session at the Link Library to discuss and review board agreements, practices, and norms in a conversation that was led by Brett Miles from the Colorado Association of School Executives.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is our public participation. As a board, we welcome the comments of community members, and we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. All speakers are limited to two minutes for their comments. Our board members typically do not respond or engage in discussion, but we will ask our district staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to the board secretary, Ms. Amy Lemon, and not to individual board members. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech, and speakers' remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th-grade students. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. We ask all speakers and those in attendance to conduct themselves in a dignified and non-disruptive manner. Cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of any public comment. With that statement read, our first speaker tonight, and I think our only speaker tonight, is Mr. David Meek. Welcome, Mr. Meek. We appreciate that you're here. Thanks.
Y'all back in that. Finally, I want to say, I'm so glad you finally honored me tonight. I wondered how and when you would ever do that, because I have a master's in counseling from a state college as well. So, thank you for honoring me. Yeah, I just happen to think, we never had counselors in school, and we turned out pretty good. America was a lot better back then, and it sure is today. And then, anyway, thank you. And that was because of the Air Force, and then I still have my 1972 Honda 350 from all that trip to do that, to get that, to get that degree and that. And then, I want to also say thank you for honoring Black History Month. You know, one of the greatest revivals in America was in 1906 that lasted for three and a half years, led by a one-eyed black man, William Seymour. That revival just started and went for on and on and on, and he was just kind of doing the best he could. It's called the Zeus Street Revival. And why I say it was one of the greatest is because out of that came a lot of our churches. Pentecostal Church of God, and then I was with Assemblies of God. Out of that came all the bunch of these Pentecostal churches. Assemblies of God is the largest Pentecostal church in the world. So, anyway, out of that. So, anyway, I have a dream. I have a dream that y'all get saved, to get born again, and do what y'all need to do. If you're really going to work together as a team, y'all need to get born again. And from the previous pastor that gave you the, what is the millstone, it's like 98% of you need to get born again and get saved. And so, I hope that when you were laying on your back, Dr. Pilch, you heard from Jesus, you know, he has a way of getting our attention. Because y'all have a moral responsibility and a God-given responsibility to teach our kids the truth. There's only two genders. It's taught electricity, and ought to be taught biology, it's called male and female. Everybody knows that, and that's your moral responsibility. Well, I don't have any more time, but thank you very much for the time that I have, because I still have a dream. We're going to be the premier district.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. Moving right along. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda, and this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education, Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the items presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on the consent agenda, Ms. Mash?
I just was pleased to see that a Greeley West graduate is being hired as a Greeley West teacher. We get to approve that, and there might be others, but that was just one that I specifically knew, so I just wanted to put in a plug to our Greeley-Evan School District 6 students. We have a teacher cadet program. We would love for you to come back and work in District 6. So, just, I just thought that was exciting. Glad to see Nathan Evans returning to Greeley West as a Spanish teacher.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Any other comments on the consent agenda? Not seeing any. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is a first read of the 2024, 2025, and 2025, 2026 school year calendars. And so, this is a first read, so it won't require any action from us. But, Dr. Pilch, would you like to introduce this item for us?
Yes, thank you, President Matthews. And Ms. Overton's making her way to the podium, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. You all are aware, we've spent most of the fall with the calendar committee working on calendar options. We did do a work session with the Board of Education earlier this semester to look at some possibilities and some drafts, and to get some feedback from you. What we're bringing you tonight is a little different than anything we shared with you in the work session, in that we're bringing you a two-year calendar proposal. And we asked the committee to consider that, so that we really have this, you know, the calendar set for two years. Families want to know what the calendar is, and I know there's also all this discussion about a possible week-long fall break, or do we look at a four-day work week? And so, this gives us more time to not feel like we have to start working on another calendar consideration, just as we've adopted one. So, we're hoping that when we come before you here next meeting, you'll be able to consider a two-year calendar, and look forward to your feedback on that tonight. With that, Ms. Overton, I'll turn it over to you, please.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Good evening, President Matthews, Board of Directors. We are here as board policy charges us to do, is to bring you information on the calendars for the '24 school year and the '25 school year. Updating the calendar takes place annually with collaborative committee represented across the whole district. It's co-facilitated by Human Resources Director Christina Crane and our Greeley Education Association President, Aaron Snyder. Other members include human resources personnel, school leadership personnel, parents, community members, elementary, middle, and high school teachers, operations and nutritional staff, academic achievement coordinator, district athletic director, safety and security staff, classified council president, and superintendent cabinet members. We have input from our district registrar, who knows the exact number of hours and minutes for each school, and our athletic director, who knows when we, what specific events take place that could be impacted by the calendar that we select. Our communications team is also a part of this, as we determine how to roll out this information. As the team works together to develop the calendar, we seek feedback from a host of different people and groups, including Council of Student Representatives, Teachers Advisory Council, District Accountability Committee, principal groups, district leadership team, and then superintendent's cabinet, and of course, our Greeley Education Association representatives and executive leadership. It's exciting to bring this work forward to you for two-year calendar, for you to consider a two-year calendar, and I'm happy to introduce Dr. Director Crane and President Snyder to the podium to share more in-depth about the committee and the calendars.
Thanks for the promotion as well. Appreciate it. Before we begin, I do want to give a shout-out to our committee members. We have an amazing team of folks that comes together to take in a lot of information. We have an amazing team of folks that comes together to take in a lot of information. So not only do they represent a lot of the community wide, but they are very, very receptive to feedback and they have done an incredible job kind of bringing all of that feedback together. So like Ms. Overton said, we are charged both by state law, board policy, and our strategic plan to come up with a calendar that really fulfills the needs of our district. So we did begin meeting this past October to relook at calendar options. We considered a number of them. And then throughout November and December, we gathered feedback from a number of committees and representatives from the community. And so we did synthesize all of that feedback and we are bringing you the calendars tonight, like Dr. Pilch mentioned, for 24, 25, and 25, 26. So this calendar, or these calendars tonight, are going to look very similar to the calendar that you are living right now. So we wanted to point out that this calendar is going to be very consistent with the calendar we have now. It will continue our Monday late starts. It does have a similar start date to our start date this year, which does allow bond construction to occur and wrap up possibly over this summer. It does maintain long weekends in both October and April to have breaks for students and staff. And our winter break is consistent with this year's calendar. It's a full two weeks with three weekends that span the end of December and the beginning of January. Some highlights here on the calendar. You can see our start date is actually the exact same date as it was this past year on August 14th for students. We have a rolling start for our first through eighth graders. And then three days later, our preschool and kindergarten students begin. Thanksgiving break happens as normal. It's the last week in November this year. As I mentioned, winter break spans December and January. Spring break does align with both our UNC and Ames partners in the district. And then we have those midsemester breaks in October and April. You can see how that impacts the staff. Our new Professionals Academy, our brand-new teachers, come in four days before our returning teachers begin. So their first day is August 1st this year. And our returning staff begin on August 7th. They'll have those late start Mondays for preparation and planning. And we do have very balanced semesters. We have a few extra days in second semester to accommodate, it's actually specifically in fourth quarter, to accommodate for state testing. So that's why you'll see there are six extra days in second semester. Here's a look at what the calendar is. You have also received in a one-page document attached to your board packet, but this just gives you a visual of those start dates and the days that we have both off, that we have for teacher preparation and planning, and for parent-teacher conferences. The 25, 26 calendar, again, follows that same pattern. So you'll see, again, an August 14th start date with the same rolling start for our younger students and then our preschool and kindergarten. Our youngest students begin three days later. Thanksgiving break, the last week in November, again, a similar winter break to this past year. Spring break, again, aligns with UNC and Ames. And then we have those midsemester breaks in October and April. This should look familiar to you. Staff impacts are the same in the following school year. And then again, we have the calendar pictured from beginning July 2025 and ending in June 2026. We're happy to take any comments and questions you may have.
Well, thank you all for being here and thank your committees as well. Thank you for the work that you've done. I don't know if we have any questions from board members yet. Ms. Mash?
Thank you very much. Thank you for all of the work that's gone into this and all of the different inputs and just, yeah, I know, it's a lot. I just had a question. They look almost exactly identical, except for in the 24, 25, there is a four-day weekend in October, but in 25, 26, it's only three days.
That is correct, and that's because of the way the days roll in the calendar year. If we have an August 1st start, that gives us one fewer day in first semester than we had in the 24, 25 calendar. And so we took that one day, made it a three-day weekend instead of a four-day weekend in October to account for that, that one fewer day.
Gotcha.
Any other questions from board members? I'm not seeing any. So, I'll say again, I know this is a lot of work and people think we make decisions and the reality is, most of the time, we're approving decisions someone else has made in a lot of ways. There's more work that goes into this than what we, than what we get on a Monday night. And so, please thank the people who put all this together. We know it's extra time for them, for your administrators, for your teachers, and everyone who worked to create this. So please thank them on our behalf and on the school district's behalf for putting this very important piece of our school year together. So, thank you. Next on our agenda tonight is our 2023, 2024 budget year revisions. And so, this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approve the 2023, 24 revised budget. This includes a total appropriation of $508,761,857. The transfer of funds from the general fund and the use of beginning fund balance where required as presented in the revised budget document.
Second.
Thank you both. I see Ms. Megan Sponsler has joined the podium. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say as an introduction?
I'll just turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Sponsler. And I'm happy to help with questions, but you all know she's Mathie Megan, so she'll help us out.
Thank you, President Matthews and Dr. Pilch and members of the board. Tonight, we have the opportunity to bring the revised budget to you for action and approval. We have until the end of January every year to revise our budget. And so this is an opportunity to take the first six months of the year into consideration and look at what we have actually spent, what we know we have to spend going forward. But then also, we need to consider our actual student count, our actual per pupil funding from the state, and then our mil levy certification and assessed valuation plays into that as well. So, all these puzzle pieces are starting to come together and we're actually starting to have an actual picture of the budget to present to you tonight. Tonight, the biggest changes to the budget are due to student count. We have budgeted a little bit higher student count than what we actually had, and so we needed to account for that. With that said, that happened pretty much statewide. You might have seen the declining enrollment press release from the Colorado Department of Education. Statewide, there was a decline in K-12 enrollment. Because of that, there may be an opportunity to go back to the state legislature and ask them to maintain their appropriation for K-12 education. So that could mean that we could get some additional funding from the state that would help us. That has to go through the legislative process. It's called the supplemental process. And I believe that has started, but I don't remember exactly when the K-12 supplemental goes up for discussion. But just know that there is the possibility of some additional funding for K-12 for our district. Per pupil funding also gets kind of adjusted and changed through the student count process, the assessed valuation process. And all of the district's information kind of goes into this magic spreadsheet and they come out with the calculation for each district. And so our per pupil funding changes slightly from what we had built our budget on. In addition, we have six months of expenses, as I said. And really, the biggest piece of the change is due to our employee salaries and benefits. When we hire a teacher, we don't necessarily know if we're going to hire them at the start of the salary schedule or at the middle of the salary schedule. And that is a pretty significant pay change, depending on where they fall on that salary schedule. So this allows us to reconcile and true up all of those salaries and benefits for teachers and support staff across the district. Those are really the big changes in the general fund and that you'll see the per pupil funding and student count impact other funds as well, as well as the impact of the salary and benefit reconciliation. But there are a couple other things that I wanted to point out. The Risk Management Fund, you'll see that the transfer from general fund to Risk Management Fund grew. And that's because as we finish the construction of our buildings and as we remodel buildings, the value of those buildings is significantly higher. So if you have a higher-valued house or you do some remodeling to your home, when you have to go back and renew your insurance, that price is probably going to go up because it costs more to insure. We're experiencing the same thing with our new buildings and our insurance premiums. So, to be expected. It's just the timing of when those construction projects are completed and when we get those on our insurance policy. You'll notice that we still have a pretty significant balance in our Colorado Preschool Program Fund. So that program, as you know, has kind of phased out and become universal preschool. We will try to spend down those funds that were set aside for the preschool program. So that is a change for this year. And then this one, I think, is very exciting. I was just told last week from my friend across the room there that Nutrition Services has served 1.5, over 1.5 million meals so far this year. That's a huge, huge increase. So, people are participating. They're, I think, enjoying the fact that they can eat for free. And so we are seeing that in our numbers. So that has higher revenue coming in, but it also means higher expenses because we still have to pay for food and for all the labor to make that food available for students. So those are really the biggest changes in this revised budget. I think overall, we are sitting very well. I think we're in a very good place financially. And so, with that, I was going to ask if you have any questions or comments? I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Sponsler. We'll wait just a second to see if there are any questions or comments from board members. I imagine we might have some, but it's a lot of information that you give us. We certainly appreciate how accurate the forecast generally is from you, Ms. Sponsler, that our revisions never seem to be terribly great ones, that you have a really good eye for what's going to happen. And so we appreciate that. You know, I've been just kind of killing time here for a second and waiting to see if anybody had any questions. And I'm not seeing any. Well, Mr. Bentley.
Can you go into a little detail on the earnings on investment? It's a million-dollar increase over your budget. Just curious.
Sure. So, a year ago, we actually had a loss on our investments and that's just because of the market and all of the just different changing economic variables happening. And so I budgeted really, really low, thinking it's possible that could continue. You just don't know. But our actual year-to-date investment earnings are significant. So, I wanted to revise that upward.
Ms. Mash?
I'm sorry, I think I didn't quite hear if you said we had additional students that we planned for or we had less. And then also a question for Dr. Pilch that I, I'm sorry I forgot to ask, but in our E-week, it just talked about, you know, since that article came out that pupils in Colorado schools is down. But I was curious about the difference between the membership and the funded pupil count as well. So, I'm sorry, it's kind of all together.
I can take that. So, yes, we are, we have declined from what we had projected. We still have just a few more students than we had last year. So we're kind of at net zero. But we had projected a little bit of a growth and that did not really materialize. So, to answer that question, the difference between the membership and the funded pupil count, membership is really kind of your head count. So, if you have a student that only attends part of the day and for whatever reason, they're still counted in that head count, but they may not be eligible for funding. So if the student doesn't have enough hours in their schedule, or if maybe their attendance is a little bit sketchy and we, you know, they miss that count window or something, then we can't count them. That's really the difference. So, funded pupil count is what we can count and get funded on. Membership is really the number of kids that are in our buildings.
Okay. So then additionally, in the E-week, it mentioned that we have had 175 new students since October count. And so we can't get per pupil funding for those students?
That is correct. Although I did hear from our lobbyist this morning that there is some effort to try to get some funding for those students. You might have seen headlines around Denver Public Schools and how many new students they have taken in since October. We're nowhere near that, but 175 students, that's pretty significant. So if we can get some additional funding, that would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Ms. Sponsler, I'm not seeing any other questions from board members. So, I think, Ms. Lemon, we're ready for a vote.
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Thank you, Ms. Sponsler, for that presentation. We appreciate you being here tonight and all of your work on this. It's great to always get to this point where we have the actual budget. So, that is all the business that we have tonight. Thank you, guys, for joining us. We appreciate that. And this meeting is adjourned.